Tuesday, July 26th. We'll come to order. My apologies for being a little late. Do we, let's do this bond release first and then we'll move on to our public hearings.
Okay, so Stanton Woods Development, you might recall, went through street acceptance at town meeting. The DPW has everything they need. All conveyances have happened and have been recorded along with the street layout plan. The developer has requested a final bond release, which on this subdivision, we had held $49,800. And they have submitted everything required. So I recommend the full bond release. And the developer is he or Michael Green, if anybody has any questions?
Okay. So anybody have any questions? You're satisfied? Everybody's satisfied?
Yep.
Okay. Somebody like to make a motion?
I made a motion to release the bond in full of $49,800 plus interest for Stanton Woods.
Okay. Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All aye. Great, okay.
Thank you very much.
So. They were all so easy. So, now we're on to our two public hearings, which we will hear together because they're a part of the combined halls. So, it looks like there's actually more people representing the developer than neighbors here. This is kind of an interesting thing. But what I thought I would do for the benefit of the public is talk briefly about the process that we go through here, is we have two public hearings. One is on the commercial development of this property, and one is on the residential development of this property. And the first is a site plan review, and the second is a site plan and also a special permit that allows the use of this in this district. This comes as a result of the town meeting vote that enables certain things, where the planning board is the authority for this. The process that we typically follow is that the town planner will give an overview of the project, then the applicant will present, the board will ask questions, and then the public will ask questions. And certainly, we will give enough time to answer any and all questions from the public. So, with that as a background, do you want to give us the overview?
So, as you stated, there's two separate filings here for site plan review amongst a few other special permits, including multifamily homes and parking reduction. The parcel of land is approximately 14 acres, located between the Haikido Restaurant and Fajetta Farm. It's an undeveloped parcel as it sits today. The two applicants are separated by a residential component and a commercial component, making the project in total a mixed-use development. It's important to note that although it's two separate applications, there is one plant, plan set that has been filed. So all infrastructure is tied. Stormwater review, civil review is all a comprehensive review across both of these projects. Tonight, the focus really going to be on a presentation at a high level of, you know, the scope of the project, the look, the feel of the project. Peer reviews are occurring. I gave you a hard copy of the text civil review at this point, but that was received late last night. The applicants are not prepared to respond to that at this time. Department reviews are coming in, they're kind of trickling in by day. So I would anticipate at the next hearing to have both the full responses from the peer reviews and town departments, as well as the applicant will have the ability to respond to those reviews. So for now, I think John Smolak will speak to the project.
I hope this isn't going to be an endless loop of this.
Yeah, we are.
Good evening, John Smolak, attorney, representing both Fajetta Development, which is the applicant with respect to the commercial aspect of this proposed project, as well as Princeton Development, which is the applicant with respect to the residential component of this mixed-use development. Before we get started, what I'd like to do is introduce you to members of the project team. We'll hear from this evening. First, Jeff Brown, Vice President, General Counsel of Princeton Properties, the holding company for Princeton Development, the applicant on the residential side. Robert Boland, Manager of Fajetta Development, the commercial applicant. Also with us is Joe Piznola, Hancock Associates, our project civil engineer for both the residential and the commercial sides of the project. Jeffrey Dirk of Vanessa Associates, our project traffic engineer for both aspects of the project. Mark Yanowitz of Verdeco Design, our project architect with respect to the commercial portion of the redevelopment, as well as, lastly, Robert Schuler of R.A. Schuler &amp; D.H., DM8 Architects, our project architect on the residential side of the project. Also part of the project team are several others who couldn't be here this evening, including Chris Huntress, Huntress of Associates, our project landscape architect, as well as Joe LaGrasse of JD LaGrasse Associates, who is collaborating with Mark Yanowitz on the commercial aspect of the project. And Andrew Chabon, the CEO of Princeton Properties, intended to be here this evening, but he was pulled away on a family emergency, so he couldn't be here this evening, and sends his regrets in that regard. What we plan to discuss or present this evening is, first, I wanted to give you a very broad, fresh overview of the proposed project, a little bit of the history. I know that most of the board members were here when we had the discussions on the planning board side, but for the benefit of those who may not have been here through those discussions, we'll just get into a little bit of that discussion. Then follow that with a discussion by, or presentation by Joe Piznola, Hancock Associates, who will walk you through the existing conditions, the proposed layout, stormwater, and how the commercial and the residential aspects of the project integrate with one another from a site layout standpoint. Then we'll follow that with a discussion on traffic by Vanessa Associates, Jeffrey Dirk of Vanessa Associates, and then follow up, lastly, with the architectural review. And so we'll have Mark Yanowitz and Rob Chaefer of our project architects, who will run you through both the commercial and the residential architectural design, and sort of identify a little bit of the thought process that went into those design elements. And so what we'd like to do with your permission is run through the complete presentation first, and then perhaps take board questions afterward, because we feel that you might learn some, or your questions may be answered if we were able to get through the entire presentation first, if that works.
We'll see if we have enough patience and self-discipline to do that.
Thanks.
I trust the rest of the board, not myself.
Okay, well, for those who may not have been present at the prior planning board hearings on the rezoning, the site at 1210 Osgood Street is 13.7 acres in size, located entirely within the business to zoning district. The site, as you're well aware of, is, as we see on the board there, to the, to the left of the board, or the southerly side of the site, is the Haikido Restaurant. To the north of the site is the Fajetta Florist Shop, as well as the remaining parts of the farm. To the east is the Plaza at 1211 Osgood Street, the former McLeys Florist Plaza, as well as Barker Farm, beyond which is Barker Street, and also single-family homes, as you see, both on French Farm and Old Farm Roads. To the west of the site is, as you see, the limits of the airport, as you see on that plan. So, as we discussed previously, as you know, this, the planning board back in 2000 did approve a retail office project of an excess of 220,000 square feet at the time, but as a result of the economic downturn and the departure of Lucent Technologies from 1600 Osgood Street, that project was abandoned. So the site has sat there for the past 16 years as a vacant parcel. And so, this evening, we're presenting redevelopment, which we feel has a balancing of, a balanced mix of uses, with two very experienced, reputable applicants that we have before you this evening. And so in connection with the property, Fajetta Development plans to redevelop approximately four acres of the 13.87 acre site into primarily a retail and restaurant commercial development, to be called Endicott Plaza. For those who were around back in 2000, this was, this site was approved and permitted. It was, the entire site was identified as Endicott Plaza, but that's the reference in the name for the plaza for this, for the smaller commercial area for this project. And in connection with the remaining 10 acres of the site, Princeton Development plans to redevelop that area into a total of 192 one- and two-bedroom market rate residential rental units, all of which will be contained in one of four separate buildings on the site, which Joe Piznola will walk you through in terms of the site layout. As you listen to the presentation, what I want you to do is focus on a couple of general themes that have come up through the process, and that we'd like you to focus on. First, both applicants have listened to the board's comments, have listened to neighborhood comments, to those that we've had conversations with. And I think what we're doing here is proposing a plan that really integrates the commercial and the residential uses into a single site plan, with a more, I guess it creates a more commercial presence along Osgood Street, and a more subtle residential layout to the rear of the site. Second, we've placed a lot of emphasis on onsite pedestrian connectivity between the residential and the commercial aspects of the project, and you'll hear a little bit more about that. Third, we've designed the commercial project, or Endicott Plaza, in a sort of a unique design and layout, which is what the architects term, and I'll let you explain it a little bit further, but more of a neo-colonial type of design, which is very similar to what you might see at the Market Street in Linfield, in terms of a design. Obviously, we don't have the size or the location of Market Street in Linfield, but this is sort of a reduced version of that. We feel we've captured that type of design. And fourth, we've tried to play, pay very close attention to the consistency of design between the residential buildings and the commercial buildings. And lastly, what we hope, and we hope the board feels the same way, and the town feels the same way, that if we can set the design standard for this site and this location, it might start to jumpstart redevelopment along this corridor heading north towards the Haverhill Line and beyond, which is consistent with the town's 125 corridor study that was completed a few years ago. So with that said, just final comments in terms of the requested zoning relief. Both Princeton Development and Fajetta Development have common applications, but separate applications for site plan review, for a common driveway special permit, because they'll both be using two of the driveways that are identified and proposed for the site, as well as a parking modification special permit, and we'll get into that in a little more detail. Beyond that, Princeton Development is also requesting a multifamily special permit for use, as well as a height waiver modification special permit, consistent with the zoning adjustments that were approved at this past May's annual town meeting. And so over the course of the past couple months since town meeting, we've had some outreach, and we, with the neighborhood, representatives of the neighborhood, we've also had a technical review committee meeting as well, and both of those have provided valuable input as part of this project. And so at this point, what I'd like to do is turn the discussion over to Joe Piznola, who will walk you through the site civil.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Just want to step back to the existing conditions plan. We did do an update to the full existing conditions for the site itself, as well as the roadway. Ben Osgood and his team at TTI did that. Mike Howard and his team at Epsilon flagged the wetlands. There are two wetlands onsite and a couple offsite that also will have impacted our design. One important note on the existing conditions, if you aren't intimately familiar with the site and its topography, there is 20 feet of topographic relief along Osgood Street from one end of the site to the other. It's 1,100 feet of frontage on the 13.8 acres. And there's 45 feet of topographic relief from the high point at the northeast corner to the low point at the, kind of the southwest corner. So that posed challenges for us to design an integrated site that had the residential and the commercial speaking to each other from a pedestrian standpoint, from an ADA standpoint. But we think we've, we've put a plan together that does that. So, no further ado, we have put together a comprehensive permit site plan and submitted it with all of the other documentation. And this is, this is the plan. Hopefully, I got a pointer here. So, in basic terms, the consistency with some of the preliminary discussions we had was to focus the commercial end along Osgood Street, and that is comprised of a four-building layout, and put the residential in the back. And that's four buildings, each with 48 units, each four stories tall. The residential also includes a leasing center down here on the, on the south end. And the small buildings that you see are actually carports. They're, not carports, they're garages for, for some of the residents. We are providing 25% of the total residential parking via these, these carports as a, as an amenity to the, to some of the residents willing to, to pay that extra charge for, for that convenience. Access to the site is primarily at the south entrance. And that is fully integrated and aligned with Barker Street across, across the way, in a geometric fashion that Mr. Dirk from Vanessa Associates can, can speak to, with regards to how that's going to be integrated into the geometric changes that, that we are proposing for Osgood Street to support all of the traffic movements that are coming in there. But primarily, that's where our folks are going to come into, to this mixed-use site for, for both the residential and, and the commercial part of that. It'll be configured with a single lane coming in and two lanes coming out. And again, Mr. Dirk can go over exactly how the movements, and that'll be signed and striped. But we come into the site, we pass by our, our leasing center, and to a, to a roundabout. All of the traffic comes in here. The leasing center, as far as, as far as that, those few parking spaces are concerned, won't be utilized that much. It's for new residents coming in to check things out, stopping at the leasing center. There is a clubhouse component to the, to that building, and by and large, the residents will come to that via, via pedestrian movements through the site, and also from the parking lot that's, that's behind it. We come up into that, that roundabout, and it, and it gives us access to three, three exits off of that. The first would be directly to the, to the east, and down into the, the commercial center via a two-lane, two-lane roadway. And that'll provide circulation around our first building, which is designed as a, as a branch bank with a drive-through at this side. So plenty of, plenty of room for those, those vehicles to move and, and come into either the site via the bypass lane to park, or into the, the drive-through. Then we've got the main boulevard, if you will, the main street that runs between the residential and the commercial. And that's really, I think, our focal point, our heart of, of the experience inside the site, without, without turning our back to, to Osgood Street. And I think the architect, the architects team will go over that. We really are focusing on, on this, these buildings being attractive from both sides, and, and kind of hiding the business ends in and amongst the, the buildings themselves. So they present very well to Osgood Street, but also an enjoyable experience for, for those coming into the, this main drag between the residential and the, and the commercial. A very important feature that, that Mr. Huntress had come up with and has really followed through with both the architectural design, the plaza design, the landscaping, and the lighting, is this idea of a spine feature that connects the pedestrian experience between, between Osgood Street, the commercial, this, this main street, and the residential. Really opens the view corridors there, opens the pedestrian experience to that. So we come, continuing down here, we can, we can move around to the Osgood side of the retail, where, where additional parking will be, will be provided. The, the main entry into the residential portion will be off the, the third exit on the roundabout, to come out and either come into what we're calling Buildings A and B, or stay straight to access Buildings C and, C and D. Those, all of the parking has been tried, has been distributed through the site, both in the garage units and the, the basic parking, to try to focus it on, or distributed amongst the residential units equally, so that, so that we, there's no question as to where, where the residents will be, will be parking. The last aspect of the site is this secondary exit, or back entrance, if you will, from those traveling southbound on, on Osgood Street. This will be a restricted entry and exit to right in and right out only. And it will be properly signed down at the, the exit points from both the residential and the commercial to indicate that, that, you know, that it will be, will be somewhat restricted. But we hope that, obviously, the residents will, will understand that, and they can always come back to this, this full-functioning exit via many different ways. All of these interior roadways are, are designed to be two-way, both in width and, and access to the, to the parking for that. So, that's the, the layout. The pedestrian experience is a, is a lot of internal walk, sidewalks that interconnect the buildings and the clubhouse and the commercial, focused, again, with the, with that east-west pedestrian corridor between the two. I did note that the peer review from, from TEC, I took a quick look at it, and they were talking about some additional residential access to the commercial around this side. And obviously, we'll work with, with the board and your consultants to, to make sure that we're really focusing that interconnectivity between, between the two, to really have, have the, the spirit here of the, the mixed-use development. With regard to zoning compliance, we are, we are proposing a dividing line between the two projects, an A and R, future A and R subdivision, that we'll bring before the board once we've vetted out some of the technical issues. We have two compliant lots. The residential will have 183 feet of frontage on the, the south end. The balance, the 900 square, 900 feet will be for the commercial lot. And that, that property line will run down, run down from, through the entrance, down and, and through the site. It, it really is about being on paper a subdivision, because the, the project won't feel like it's divided. It'll, it'll just, it's for purposes of, of financing and, and the ultimate ownership of, of the two projects, as well as some of the management. There will be, as Gene mentioned, there will be a lot of common infrastructure that we'll need to, we'll need to deal with, with easements, cross easements, and so forth. We are providing parking in compliance with, with the bylaw for the commercial. There's actually two additional spaces over compliance. The residential is 12 spaces short of compliance, and that's really what it ends up doing with the mix of one and two-bedroom units and your, your bylaw requirements for one and a half spaces for one-bedrooms and two for two-bedrooms. It ends up being a ratio, based on our mix again, of 1.83. Our target parking for this kind of project in this kind of mix is 1.75. So we don't want to overpark it, but we're almost at compliance. It's, it's a total of 10 short when you look at the two additional, two over compliance for the commercial and the 12 under compliance. But we have asked for that special permit, considering that, you know, there is obviously opportunities for, for some sharing and some promotion of, of the pedestrian interconnectivity between the, the two projects. We can further drill down as we, as we get into the process of, you know, where that dividing line is, and how that relates to additional relief that we might need through those waivers for setbacks to parking and so forth, because we are striking that line right now down through the pavement. But there's nothing, there's nothing absolute about that line. And again, we, we thought that it's a starting point to break the, the projects into 9.5 acres for the residential and 4.3 for the commercial. But we, you know, we can, we can have that play out. It's more important that the, that the project feels one, and that, that people don't understand that there's a, there's a break. We had thought originally that there was going to be a, a very stark topographic difference between the two, and that we would have had to keep the commercial up high and the residence down low, and have a retaining wall between. And we really fought to not have that, and have that ADA compliant interconnectivity. So we worked real hard on the grades to, to make those work. Speaking of grades, we, we have done a comprehensive grading plan, in which I think the grades coming in off the entry are fairly soft and gradual, you know, 3%, maybe a little steeper section in the center, but then back to really controllable grades, all ADA compliant, in our main street down through the center. Those are very soft grades, nothing more than, than 3%. As we, as we do get through here, we, you know, we do have some, some planes in which these buildings are set down a little bit from, from the roadway, but all within control, so that we can have first-floor units there with full, full windows. They're not in a, in a hole by any means. But there is, we are taking the opportunity to be able to, to move downward into the site. So you've got the, the commercial plane, which does softly rise up as we move to the north, and the buildings do step, but step gradually, so that the plaza feels very comfortable for, for pedestrian movement. And, and we, we move downward to, to this, this area and the parking that's associated with these two buildings. But then, down here, they're on a lower, lower level still. So we take those opportunities to drop as we move back to try to come up, overcome that 45 feet that I talked about. There is a, some, some retaining walls, some substantial retaining walls along the back of the property, because we, we can't overcome that 45 feet and make everything work. And we'll continue to work, work through that. There was another question within the TAC review about the ground plane and the average grades around the buildings. And we'll certainly provide that information, but the idea would be that we, we don't use the buildings as retaining walls, and we're not dropping out and exposing a bunch of foundation in which the buildings will feel higher. We are trying to balance that with offset retaining walls, and, and really bring the site, bring those buildings to, to something that feels unified with the overall project. So as we, as we move on to infrastructure, we, we, we think the commercial, from a sewer standpoint, the commercial in the first front, two front buildings, as well as the leasing center, can be taken care of through the municipal sewer by gravity. The back two buildings will have to feature some, some kind of a lift station pump to, to come out. With regard to stormwater, our, our concept is here, here is to utilize underground infiltration areas to recharge the water back into the ground. We've proposed 13 individual systems that are either taking parking lot drainage or roof drainage, but dispersing that through the site, so it mimics the existing, the existing recharge that happens there. We have done some extensive soil testing to support that, and we look forward to working with Ms. Eggleston and her review of the stormwater, as well as TEC and their peripheral review of some of the civil issues as, as that comes. All other utilities, peripheral or gas, electric, will be, will be underground and, and supported. And that, this is just our utility plan that, that shows some of those, some of those connections. Mr. Huntress has provided a, a landscape plan with a palette that tries to really focus on, on the experience with street trees and, and some shading. I think where we want to enhance that and bring it forward a little bit more is, is in the, the commercial area, retail plaza, with a lot of hardscape and landscape areas where we can open those up. Some of that will have to be flexible, because we don't have users for all of those, and there may be some tenant demands with regards to position of doors and windows and ultimate lines of division between some of the larger buildings. But the idea is to really, really have a nice experience in that, in that plaza, with regards to both hardscape and landscape. We have provided the beginnings of a lighting plan. I do know TEC is looking for, and your, your bylaws actually call for some kind of speaking to the intensity of the light and an isolux or a photometrics, and we will be providing that. But we are, we are proposing full cutoff dark sky attractive lighting package that, that obviously will, will enhance everything that we're trying to put forth, as, as far as what we believe this project to be. project to be. I think that that's it for the general civil overview, trying to keep it brief, and from 10,000 feet, we'll dig down into the details more as we advance with TEC and Ms. Eggleston with regard to the peer reviews and obviously respond to your questions and any questions of the residents. I think we'd like to transition into the traffic with Mr. Dirk.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Jeffrey Dirk, Principal with Vanessan Associates, and we're the traffic engineers for the project. So just following up on what Joe had said, we're going to talk traffic from the 10,000 or 30,000-foot level. You do have a detailed traffic study that we prepared for the project, so I'd be happy to get into as much detail as you'd like on the analysis, facts, and figures. I'll give you just some numbers to kind of focus in on relative to the context of the project in relation to Oswood Street. I do want to mention, just in case it's of interest to you, that I was the traffic engineer for the original proposal that John had mentioned back in 2000, so very familiar with the roadway, and I think as we get to talk about the access improvements, you'll see some consistency with what we're thinking for the access, because I think in speaking with the neighbors even on the prior proposal, we know it's very important, and it's important to the town as well. The idea of pedestrian connectivity, that flows into the project, as Joe had mentioned, but it also flows into our offsite improvements and the access of the project as well, so you'll see kind of a consistent theme there. So what I've shown on the slide here is the project context in relation to 125, but also the study intersections that we looked at. Those are shown with the colored dots that are on the plan with the red, yellow, green, the signalized intersections that we looked at, so starting at Sutton Street in the south, and then moving up to the 133 Great Pond Road intersection with 125. Our access that comes out opposite Barker Street was included in our study area, and then continuing north to the Holt Road intersection, which has the flashing beacon at the present time at that location. So that was the study area that framed the basis of our traffic study. We performed traffic counts out on the roadways. Those were done in June, just prior to public schools getting out, so we made sure that it was reflective of traffic patterns with school basically in session, so we've captured all of that. The time periods that we looked at in our analysis and what we focused in on for the improvements are, it's actually three peak periods, because as John had mentioned, or Joe had mentioned as well, we have a mixed-use development, so we've got commercial in the front, the residential in the back, so we have three peaks that will happen relating to the project. In the morning, we have our commuter peak that's going to happen between 7:00 and 9:00 when people are going to work. In the afternoon, we have a peak that happens between 4:00 and 6:00. That's actually going to be the highest traffic volume period for our project because of the fact that at that time period, the residents are coming home from work, but also the retail is peaking at that time period as well, so basically that's our worst-case design condition. And then we also look at a Saturday time period when people are shopping between 11:00 and 2:00 in the afternoon, and as you look kind of to the plaza to the south of us, they're peaking at that time period, our retail will be peaking, so that's another time period that we're looking at, and the traffic patterns are different. The way that people are using the roadway on a Saturday is different than they are when they're commuting on a weekday as well. So those are the time periods we looked at, and as I mentioned, just some facts and figures. So Oswood Street in the vicinity of where our site is, it accommodates about 15,600 vehicles per day, and that's two-way traffic on the roadway over 24 hours. On a Saturday, the numbers come down slightly, they're around 12,500, so it's a slight reduction. Oswood Street is a commuting road, so what we generally see is about 70% of the traffic in the morning is heading southbound, and then if you look at it in the evening, the same amount is going northbound, so you can see it's a perfect commuter pattern. We expect our project's going to generally follow those same traffic patterns on the roadway, so as we're designing our improvements, we're looking at that traffic pattern, looking at those volumes as well. Now, if you do have a chance to go through the traffic study, it's not very interesting to read, but if you do go through it and you at least skim the executive summary, I think one of the things I wanted to point out is you'll see we've analyzed two conditions, and there we've called them Options A and Option B. From the standpoint of what you're looking at on the site plan, it's our Option A. The difference between the two, they both include 192 residential units, and the difference is really it's the mix and size of the retail component of the project. And the reason why we did this analysis was basically to look at kind of this critical Barker Street intersection. What we're proposing to do, and I might just go to that plan now, it's quite small. What we're planning to do at the Barker Street intersection is install a traffic signal. This section, actually the entirety of the 125 corridor in this area is under the jurisdiction of the Department of Transportation. In order to install a traffic signal at that intersection, we have to meet what's known as warrants, and there's nine warrants, and we have to meet at least one of those warrants to install a traffic signal. So what we basically did with the two design scenarios, the Option A, Option B, is to look at a sensitivity analysis, and what it basically says is, if you just built the residential apartment community, we could not install a traffic signal at the intersection, it just doesn't generate enough volume of traffic to meet the criteria to install the signal. So really, the sensitivity analysis looks at is, how much commercial space do you need to have on the site to support the traffic signal? And the Option A scenario, which is just about 43,000 square feet of space, that's the level of development that you really need to have on the site in order to meet the criteria to install a signal. So that's why, that's the plan that you have before you, that's really what we're advancing, but just to kind of remove some confusion as you look in the traffic study, there's an Option B that we've looked at, and that's the break line, if you wanted to look at it from a different scenario. If you go below the mix of uses that are shown on the site plan for the commercial piece, we wouldn't be able to install a traffic signal. And I'll point out a lot of the benefits to having the signal, which you probably already know on the corridor there itself, so that's kind of the difference between the two scenarios. I think just an important thing before I leave this as well, safety is probably the most important thing that we look at. Looking at the roadway safety, we're looking at speed of traffic, we're also looking at motor vehicle crash history, and then we're looking at pedestrian and bicycle accommodations as well. One of the things that's important to note is that the speed of traffic in this area, it's posted 40 miles an hour. The majority of the traffic is going in excess of that, but it's traveling somewhere within a five mile an hour pace of that speed, so it's generally people are going between 46 and 47 miles an hour, the majority of the traffic on the roadway. The sightlines of the driveway are appropriate for 50 miles an hour or in excess of that, so that means in terms of the positioning and the locations of the driveway, they're appropriately located and positioned and designed so that we have safe operations of those intersections. And looking at the crashes along this corridor, the good thing is that none of the intersections had a crash rate that exceeded what would be expected based on the volume of traffic at the locations. When I speak of the crash rates, the state publishes statistics for us to be able to look at, and it's basically number of crashes per million vehicles going through an intersection, and we're able to look at that and assess the number of crashes in relation to the volume of traffic on the roadway. All of the intersections, there are crashes happening, but it's below the state criteria for significance, so that means, yeah, there's some crashes happening, but it's not what would be unexpected based on the volume of traffic on the roadway, so there's no hotspots in terms of crashes. There's not really pedestrian connectivity in the area, and that's one of the areas we focused in on the site plan. I'm sure your master plan addresses that as well, as we're trying to advance some of those opportunities in the area. You've got a four-lane roadway, 40 mile an hour speed, no sidewalks, and no bicycle accommodations out there either, so that's a very important thing as we talk about this being a state highway. MassDOT has a lot of initiatives relating to basically a green infrastructure, and one of their things that they're really promoting, and is a difference between the 2000 project and the current project, is what's known as the Healthy Transportation Initiative. All projects on a state highway have to adhere to this Healthy Transportation Initiative, and it's actually a policy directive that we have to follow. So if we're seeking a permit, which we are, on a state highway, when we design improvements, they not only have to process motor vehicles, but we have to accommodate pedestrians and bicycles. Even if the entire corridor doesn't do that, what they want to see is that as the segments of the corridor get developed and as you approve other projects, that you create this consistent infrastructure so that eventually, when it's all done, either through private development or state projects, that you will end up with an infrastructure that accommodates all modes of transportation. So just jumping to that. This plan shows the improvements that we're planning as a part of the project, as well as the access points into the property, which Joe gave you a brief overview on. So looking to the south, you see the Barker Street intersection and how the access point to the property will align with that. So what we're planning there is it's a full-access intersection. We are proposing to install a traffic signal at that location. The important things in terms of the improvements we're planning is as you look, as you're heading northbound from 133 up towards the Holt Road area, we're installing left-turn lanes essentially in both directions, so there'll be a separate left-turn lane. We maintain two lanes of through-moving traffic in both directions, and then we have a left-turn lane either to turn into the site, and then opposing that would be a left-turn lane to go into Barker Street. As you're heading southbound and you approach the access, we're also adding a right-turn lane. So the idea here is that any turning traffic associated with the project has its own lane. It's basically out of the way of any through traffic, so that creates some additional capacity on the roadway so that we're not degrading the ability of anyone. If you don't want to visit the site and you just want to continue past the property, we're adding turn lanes so that no one associated with the project is getting in your way. That's in its own lane. It will be controlled by a traffic signal, so it'll be a full red, yellow, green, signalized intersection. On both our project driveway and on the Barker Street approach, what you see is it's basically two lanes approaching 125. So again, we're separating left turners from the through and right turn movements, because left turns require more time to process, so it makes it operate more efficiently. And then as I spoke about pedestrian connectivity, what you see on this plan here is that we're adding sidewalks, sidewalks along the frontage of the property, along 125. It does run from one driveway to the other driveway at this point, so it creates a loop, but the idea is that in the future, it can be extended to go beyond the property. And then importantly, on the Barker Street side, is you see a sidewalk being added there, and then a crossing of 125 that will be under control of the traffic signal with a push button, so that essentially if someone wants to come from the residential side of Barker Street, they want to come over to the project to visit a friend at the residential development or to patronize one of the commercial opportunities there, they can push a push button, sidewalks, wheelchair ramps, the entire intersection will go red, so there will be no traffic moving at the time of pedestrians crossing, and then the pedestrian crosses Route 125 in a safe manner, so it's a controlled intersection. That crossing, and having the crossing with a traffic signal and push button is very important. That provides our connectivity that we need, and it also addresses with the signal, absent the signal, we know that on the Barker Street side, it's difficult to make a left turn up there today. Speed and volume of traffic and the number of travel lanes makes that very difficult, and it's something that from a safety perspective, the signal will allow it to happen more efficiently, but also in a much safer manner. So we think that's an important part of the project, and the commercial space supports the ability to be able to install the signal and bring these amenities as well. As we proceed to the north end of the site, as Joe had mentioned, it's a restricted access right-in, right-out driveway. It's being restricted by means of a raised channelizing island, so if you look closely, there's a little green dot that appears on the drawing there, but that's an island that's in there physically raised, it'll maybe landscaped, and it forces channelization, so you really can't make a left turn coming out of there. So we have signs, pavement markings tell you not to do it, but the island physically restricts you from being able to do that as well, so that's an important feature. The other thing that you really can't see on the drawing is that there's also wider shoulders. That's important from the standpoint of a safe operation on the highway, but also it allows for the future bicycle connections in there, so five-foot shoulders on both sides of the roadway, that's the minimum width that's required to actually be striped as a bike lane. So in the future, as more development happens or additional improvements, this section will at least be in place, it'll have pedestrian accommodations and bicycle accommodations, and then again, with the feature of the state's Healthy Transportation Initiative, as other development happens, it hooks into this, and then eventually you'll have a consistent pedestrian and bicycle corridor along the entirety of the property. So that's a brief overview of the traffic perspective. The only other two things I want to mention is some of the things that John had talked about in terms of shared-use driveways. We want to minimize the number of curb cuts, so two is basically the minimum from the standpoint of efficient circulation of the project to support this development. It minimizes the number of curb cuts along 125, which creates a safe condition, but also from the standpoint of functionality, having shared access is important as well. It allows us to reduce driveways, but also the number of driveways is what we actually need to support the development. And then as we talk about the commercial space, and I know there's a request before you relating to parking reductions, it's really important that as we look at this Option A scenario, we've turned it, it's important that you've got a mix of uses for the commercial piece that will allow for some interaction between the residential piece and the commercial piece. If you had just a bank and just a small amount of retail space or office space, that interaction is really reduced, so you don't get the benefit of what will be called shared parking, which allows us to actually have reduced parking, because during time periods of the day when the residents are off at work, some of the spaces get freed up for use by the retail piece, so there's some sharing that happens, it's beneficial to the project, but it also reduces impervious area, and I think that's one of the goals that the town has as well.
Can I ask you to please repeat two numbers before we move on?
Yes.
What was the average daily load on Oswood Street at this point?
Today, it's 15,600 vehicles per day on a weekday, and on a Saturday, it drops down to about 12,500 vehicles per day.
And how many vehicles being added to the site during development?
Under the Option A scenario, which is before you, we're going to be adding just about 3,600 vehicles on a daily basis. During any one of those three peak periods I mentioned, about 10% of that traffic's going to happen, so the highest traffic volume, you'd have about 360 net new vehicles added to the roadway.
Thanks.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Fab, we'd like to just turn to the architectural design, so Mark Yanowitz. Good evening, a pleasure to be here. Mark Yanowitz, Principal of Rodeco Designs, but also an Associate of J.D. Legrosen Associates. We're working together on this proposal. First, wanted to show images of our site contacts. This is the 125 corridor. I'm sure you know these buildings. All of these businesses are just south of the property, and it's important just to point out, you know, it's a mixture of architectural styles, they tend to be, you know, what's considered traditional New England, you know, vernacular type, some a little more contemporary, some a little more traditional than others. One- and two-story buildings, you know, a lot of gable roof type of articulation, and so it's a similar scale that we're representing. These are all, you know, kind of suburban, commercial businesses and kind of sites, and we feel that ours is compatible, but has some distinct advantages over some of these singular commercial developments. Going to our proposal on the commercial architectural side, this is essentially conceptual elevations of the four buildings that we're representing, and I'll have a kind of a blow-up site plan. Here, similar to those other buildings, you know, we have a small landscape buffer. The common entrance is just to your left of the bank, and we're playing with a rhythm of kind of unit divisions and scale to help, you know, break up the mass of these buildings, give them more pedestrian scale, and make it a friendlier, more interesting elevation. To point out, you can see the four-story residential behind, and the lower image, you know, it's really a straight-on elevation. I think with the view angle, as you'll see in the flyby rendering that started tonight's proceedings, but we'll show it to you again, it's because of the view angle, you're really mostly going to be seeing the rooftop of the four-story residential buildings, and that's because of the elevation change.
I know you're trying to hold questions, but I've got to stop for a question.
Yeah, I decided after having gone for about 40 minutes, I wouldn't wait to have asked a question, but, so go ahead.
You know, when we discussed this previously, and also at the beginning of this meeting, we were talking about the topography and how it drops off as you move away from Oswood Street, and that was really part of the equation for the height of the residential buildings. And so I hear what you're saying about the view angle, but is this an accurate representation? Because, you know, the first row of residential really seems to be almost at the same elevation as the front commercial, and there's no advantage of topography here in terms of lowering the profile of those four-story, the first row of four-story buildings.
There is a topography drop, and our civil engineer can define it in more accurate terms, but that's a four-story building, and ours are two-story buildings, so, you know, we are, we're taking at least 10 feet out, and there is a view angle. We're also, you know, we're not fully raising, I mean, as Joe mentioned... We're also, you know, we're not fully raising, I mean, as Joe mentioned, we're carving into the site as we go north. So our commercial buildings largely to keep the ADA compliance and try to keep our plaza areas pedestrian-friendly, we're not raising each building significantly as we travel north.
So what's the difference in elevation between the ground floor of the front row of commercial versus the ground floor of the first two residencies? What's that number?
And that will vary building to building, but Joe can answer that.
Currently, we have the bank, which is the first, at 155, and then the commercial marches up the hill, 157, 158, 5, 162, and 163. The first two buildings are at 156 and 160. So again, as you're coming into the site, there's kind of an equal elevation as it moves through the bank and through the roundabout to that corner of the building, but as you move to the north, that topography gets greater. In the north corner of the commercial, there is a seven-foot wall, so that the commercial's actually sunken down. Rather than continuing to address itself to Osgood Street in elevation, that's where I said we needed to find the balance to make the sites work together, both from a pedestrian-friendly standpoint and from a requirement standpoint for ADA. So it's really that balance. So I think the question, the bottom line is as you move further up the site, that differential becomes more pronounced.
I don't think that was the point.
Yeah, but this point was the residential.
Going back.
Yeah, going back the other way.
There was supposed to be a decline in the topography.
I'm comparing what I'm seeing to what we were told at prior meetings, which was generalizing, that the topography sloping down as you go away from Osgood Street would help to compensate for the four-story height of the residential buildings, including the first row, by lowering them. And the numbers you just gave us, you know, just to take the average, it's only a difference of between zero and three feet, which is not what we heard when we first heard about this.
And that is true. Well, I said earlier in my presentation that what we had, what realized in the design versus what we had thought really couldn't play out in full because of this interconnectivity and the requirements for ADA compliance. So what we've tried to do, both architecturally and from a landscape standpoint, was to play with that as much as we can, to minimize that as much as we can.
So part of the reason why we went through the Board of Selectmen and town meeting is doesn't exist, because the buildings are going to be higher than the front.
Yes, in the case of especially that first building on the south side. Now, we go out back, and the finished floor of the back building to the south is 148, so it's considerably lower, and the back building to the far west is 150.
So, John, I think I understand that this is, you know, something for the purposes of the ADA, and I'm certainly not challenging that. I'm just.
Well, I mean, I think, you're right, you're right, but I think it's a number of things. One of the things that they've tried to do beyond the ADA is they've tried to achieve an integration between the residential and the commercial, and so, you know, they've used that term a main street, so that if you have a street, you basically have to have topography that's reasonably consistent. I think what we need to do with this is we're going to have to really look at and drill down on that a little bit more detail, because it's, and rendering like this, I'm not sure sort of fully does justice to what's there, but again, it could even be a little bit more severe than that, so we'll have to look at that pretty closely.
Well, so then we technically don't have to approve a four-story building in the first set of buildings, right? I mean, technically, if we're not happy with the height.
Well, height is something that we have the flexibility over, yes, correct.
One important point is, you know, again, if we see the grades, not so much the relationship between the two buildings, the commercial buildings and the residential buildings, but as they relate to the street, if we're, again, we're gaining 20 feet of elevation change moving in the northerly direction, if we're to move directly across from the road directly to that first southerly building, we go from 162 to 156, so there's a six-foot differential, and that gets greater the further you go to the north. The building to the north is relating 170 to 160, so it's a 10-foot differential. So it does, and I think that we need to look at some of the other positions, the other renderings and the fly-through to appreciate that a little bit more.
And I appreciate the explanation on the compromises and, you know, the design process, I truly do. I'm just reconciling, what we were essentially told before is that topography would allow you to look across and just see the roof line of the front row of commercial, and because of the topography, the subsequent residential buildings, although four stories, would sort of be the same roof line. And that was the description we had.
No, and that was, you know, certainly our hope, and it's about competing goals and requirements.
Right, so we're looking at, yeah.
So we just have to, yeah, we have to look at and drill down on it a little bit, because I think, yeah, I mean, I'm eager to see what the residential buildings look like, because on top of everything else, they're bigger buildings than the commercial buildings, and the commercial buildings, because of the way they're gabled and everything, takes away from it, whereas the residential buildings are just a little bit bigger, so we'll have to.
I don't think they're just a little bit bigger, it looks like a lot bigger.
They're a lot bigger, yeah. They have to be, I mean, by definition, they're bigger, but you.
But I'm talking from the street view.
Yeah, right, right, yeah. I mean, you know, we can, I mean, we're going to take a sidewalk, if we have to do a balloon thing, we can do that. I mean, there's a lot of things we can do to really, you know, kind of look at it and figure out how it makes sense, and, you know, maybe when we look at design a little bit, we'll want to soften the buildings a little bit and, you know, break thoughts of, who knows? I mean, let's just go through it, but point all taken. So, and I'm glad you stopped it, because I think it's important to.
What you can see through that high story is showing.
Yeah. So, if you want to continue, we're taking you off. I hope you don't lose your mojo here.
No, it's a, it's all a good process. Going through, you know, we're seeing individual elevation studies of the buildings, and again, trying to do undulating roof lines, break up materials, and really create a pedestrian scale at that retail level. Should be noted that Building 3 is officially a two-story building, and that is where we're showing a commercial office component and getting more of the commercial density. The buildings, the breakout is about a 3,000-square foot footprint for the bank. Building 2 is designated as a restaurant at about 5,200 square feet. The Building 3 is a total of 18,800 square feet, a majority being on the first floor, but the second floor, it's being like a three-fifths on the first floor, two-fifths on the second, so we would have an elevator and full access to the second floor there. And Building 4 is a series of, you know, you might have, will have a small restaurant on the south side, which we'll see as well as retail and potential office as a one-story building.
What was the size of that one?
I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, that one would be 16,000 square foot as a footprint. This gives you more of a blow-up of the commercial site development. Again, you see the main entrance to the south, and as Joe kind of pointed out, the vehicular access, which goes to all four sides of all the buildings. But we really made a concerted effort not to do just the standard kind of strip center that you often see down on 125, and we purposefully really separated the commercial components into three structures, so that there are pedestrian and plaza type of gathering spaces, walkways, outdoor seating. Building 2, as you see, we envision that to be a restaurant with south-facing outdoor seating. You could also have east-facing, but you have, you know, pedestrian area and plaza all around. There's equally, we have a small plaza between Building 2 and 3 to also promote outdoor gathering and pedestrian traffic, but, and the main, kind of central pedestrian spine, as was defined earlier, is between Building 3 and 4. We show another restaurant at south-facing on Building 4, which could really be a gathering place, and that's where the main pedestrian connection is to the residential buildings beyond. So it's true with the elevation discussions that we just had, we, it was determined by the team that that balance, trying to strike that balance, we did lower the kind of plaza areas of the commercial and raise that first set of residential to really make that a pedestrian-friendly connection between those buildings, and that's, you know, really tied in through that main spine and pedestrian circulation between Building 3 and 4. You know, we do have some buffer space. In turn, as we kind of carve the parking along Osgood Street, it provides, you know, kind of a natural buffer for headlights and so forth, parking then shining back into Osgood. And again, as Joe mentioned, we have a retaining wall in the northern section of that parking lot, which further kind of protects that parking area.
I will ask a couple of questions too, because I actually do think it's easy to do while it's coming up, is getting back to the discussion we just had, if you do show the two residential buildings there, what's the difference in the, in other words, for the front of the building to the back building, does it go down at all? Is it lower on the bottom side, or is it the same height? Is it flat the whole way through, or is there like a stair down there?
It's higher, the ground is higher than the first floor on the Osgood side of the residential, but we're, we need to be sensitive to getting natural light into those lower units. So the back of the building is one, you know, is 158 versus the 156, 164 versus the 160, and then it's flat across the west, the west side of those buildings.
So you're saying it's basically from front to back, it's flat, it doesn't, you know, you're not riding the contour down there, you're just, it's flat?
On the west side? We are continually to go down as we move westerly, but across the back, it rises a little bit to the north, and that's why you've got this stepped elevation between the south building and the north building.
Okay, but east to west, front to back, it's how many feet drop again?
Two to four feet from the east side to the west side.
Okay.
Now, we could go deeper on that and have, you know, half wells in there, but it begins to have those first-floor units on the west side darker, and, you know, everyone's seen that style of a garden-style apartment that they built back in the day, when you walk in the front door and walk down four stairs to the lower level, because it's suppressed. While you can do it from a code standpoint, because you can get windows in there and you can get fresh air in there, those units do feel different. They feel like you're.
Can you move the buildings back further, so that they go down further?
If you took a few of your carporth and moved them between the commercial and the residential.
You don't want to do that. That houses up the continuity between the commercial and the residential.
It's all balanced, we're hearing you and we understand, you know, your concerns, and, you know, we've tried to strike a balance. Maybe we went too far the other way, and we've got to try harder to get these buildings back. We can continue to work on that. Can we, you know, can we solve it here, all here tonight?
No.
But we can certainly have the discussion. You understand the challenges that we have with regard to connectivity and ADA compliance. We understand your strong desire from the initial concept, so we will continue to work on it.
I think we have to work pretty closely on this, I mean, because I do think the connectivity is important, but the massing of the buildings is also important. One other question related to architecture, in the front, where your, the parking is sort of out, one to look at, Osgood Street, are you planning on any, like a stone wall or fence or anything that differentiates the parking from the, where the greenery begins?
We haven't, I mean, well, Mr. Huntress has presented the landscape design and left that fairly open, because we do have continually greater topographic relief to hide that parking, but certainly we can listen to the board and work on that, and have Chris here to discuss your ideas. I think any kind of a wall is certainly a great idea, some, maybe some fencing, obviously some landscaping, we just want to.
On 114, we've done, it's varied, but I honestly think the, they actually did a very nice job in, you know, positive apartments, I think, and across the street with C V S.
And there's some good topo there.
That's actually turned out to be pretty nice, I think, the stone wall, but again, it's just a concept of differentiation.
Yeah, no, I think they did a great job there, and one of the things that they were sensitive to, that we need to be sensitive here, is the visibility of the commercial units themselves. We want to hide the parking, hide the, to the degree we can, but we want to be sensitive that there'll be building signage on this, there'll be the identity that we need to foster for the economic viability of that commercial park.
I have an elevation question to move on. I think I have it right. Banks, Building 1, restaurants, Building 2, retail office is Building 3, and retail restaurant is Building 4, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I look at the main roof line on the banks, 24, the restaurants, 20, the retail office is 29, and then the retail restaurant is 26. Those roof lines don't seem like they're following the grades, so we're going to have a bunch of step up and down on the roof lines? Is that correct?
Well, the, each grade, you know, as Joe pointed out, pops up about two feet, I think, as we go up the site.
So we go 24, 20, 29, 26.
And, yeah, I, it was, I mean, that's, it was something that does not, we didn't feel strongly that it had to be at one level, but we were certainly able to play with the roof lines further as well, and it, you know, we personally like the undulation of it, and we could even make.
I don't know if it all has to be the same.
Up and down is sort of weird.
Well, not really.
Not necessarily.
I work through Bigget Hill every day, and I look up, and no two buildings have the same way, and they go up and down, and they're, you know, it's a little bit different concept, but you're right, if it's two, like if you had something that was 12 feet, and then you had 35 feet on the other side of it, it would be an issue, but I think a few feet here and there.
Well, you go from 20 to 29, and then you're also going to have a different view of those buildings too, behind it.
Well, and understand, two of the dimensions you called out were really tower elements.
No, that was the main roof line.
Okay, and the main, okay, right, the 20.
Can you go back to the presentation that you showed the whole front? Just so we can see that?
Oh.
Keep going back.
Yeah.
There we go.
So I, personally, I could actually see Building 3 come up a little bit more, because it is more of a two-story building, and the roof line, you know, I think it could also benefit as a, you know, a balancing element. it could, it could also benefit as a, you know, a balancing element to the residential building behind, but.
Rather than, I mean, if there is a discussion about the fact that the back buildings are taller and sticking out more than was originally anticipated, what, rather than adjusting those, couldn't you just make the front buildings taller?
I'd be, be happy to, be happy to. And, you know, we can do some other elements that, you know, other, other towers is, there's, there's all sorts of flexibility. Really, we, we're up at about 34, 35 feet at our taller point. We could easily play with that and I think that could be effective as a way to balance the commercial with the residential and, and, and it would be a very real experiential thing. And 35, 40 feet, and again, these buildings are slightly sunken, I, I don't think they would feel large on, on the corridor at all.
I think the zoning would be too facility high, it was 35 feet and I think the allowance for the waiver was on residential buildings.
Was it? Okay, so we could-
It'd be up against all-
At 35 is, is max.
Yeah, I mean, think about the idea again, play with the tools which are available.
And the grades.
Are we going to, are you going to show us any more in terms of the architectural?
Yeah, there were, there were just a couple of renderings to show more of, you know, real scale, pedestrian, you know, we had planters in mind, you know, benches integrated.
You actually have a bigger sidewalk than you typically have. I mean, I'm reading that as, that's not a 45 feet sidewalk, that looks like more like 15, 20 feet.
Exactly. And so you, you see that up back on our site plan as well. I mean, these are very generous plaza areas and again, really distinguish us from the standard strip center. We really want it to be a sense of place that people would hang out and I think, you know, this, it's a wonderful opportunity to have a mixed use development where you have customers living on site, you know, with the businesses and many businesses would be attracted and many residents would be attracted to having that, that interplay between live work, you know, commercial services, restaurants, and, and a place to live. So largely we're giving some additional outdoor space to, to really make that connectivity vibrant and I think, I think it also just brings in outside customers quite as well too. So technically, we could put more commercial square footage on this site, you know, it, it really becomes challenging to the parking requirements, but we could add, you know, more footprint.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
But in, in this case, though, we're, we're doing the balance, we're doing the balance with, with, with plaza area and this is-
Will the front of the building and the back, can't it look the same?
Yes, very much so. I mean, we, we would want to do variations, but, but yes, same quality, we'd have entrance, commercial entrances. We don't have as much plaza space, but there is some significant, but definitely this, as Joe explained in the presentation, the buildings would, would be four-sided elevations that would really tend to be very attractive from the residential side and, you know, parking there, you would feel like you're going into an entrance just as well as from Osgood side. So I, we think it's, it's, it's got, it's an exciting project that, that really, I think, you know, could commercially be very vibrant.
Just another question about both sides. Is it envisioned that one business has, kind of goes from front to back, so there's an entrance to the-
That's how we, that's how we have laid it out.
Or it's two different businesses?
No, right now it's showing as, you know, in the ideal, it would be one business with, with sep, multiple entrances.
Okay.
Of course, there's the opportunity to subdivide it, but, so yes, it's, it's kind of a two-sided entrance.
Okay.
And again, you know, we showing more of this kind of main, kind of pedestrian corridor, which would lead us to the residential and, you know, having restaurant, other types of activities that, you know, could again be a, a good place to hang out as well as, you know, shop and so forth.
Okay, good.
There you go.
Great, excellent. Thank you.
Rob Schaefer, also part of the architectural team, I thought I'd just take you back to the walkthrough you saw at the beginning and quickly go through that. That kind of brings everything home that you've been talking about. So we're starting basically from Barker Street, across the street from the site and starting with the bank and I'll run it through. So get a sense in the background there of the, the residential buildings with mature trees in front of it to help screen it. As you go by, make note of the windows for what we really enjoy is the modern country colonial, more simplified details, but with the mix of the country colonial windows with the storefront windows to give you that context of the, the area. The, stop, right here, this, a little bit further. Stop. Right there is the, the main core, which makes this project pretty exciting and I'm hearing the discussion on the trade-off between the elevation versus the connectivity. I think that is a key to this project. We aren't involved in many projects where you're multi-family and retail, commercial together. That really makes the site, I think, a wonderful place for people to live and commune and interact. So where you walk out of your residence and come down this core and enjoy the restaurant and retail that may be right there with you as opposed to getting your car and having to drive somewhere. So the other aspect of a country colonial and kind of bringing that texture of the area is the mix of materials, you have the brown corner, the clapboards, the verticals, this would be board and batten, that mix of materials, bringing that whole context into one project, I think it really helps bring, make it more inviting for people to pick a store that they're familiar with based on the, the design of that store versus other ones tend to be small elements that signify a store and then everything's kind of unified across where this, you start to recognize the store that you like to go to based on the elements that there. And then at the end here, you see how the grades start to come up, the parking's down low underneath, so you really overshoot the cars parked in front and can see the retail space and then the residential's a bit in the back there. The, there was a discussion on the, on the buffering, there could be some light buffering here, but I would also hesitate to do too much to block the view of the, the retail, so it should be a good balance between the two to help, where people coming by to see where they want to go versus this retail space behind the wall that you have to know is there as opposed to seeing it there. So, keep it going and let you see it again. And that was it.
Great. Okay. Good. I think that's, that's it for that additional presentation.
Are we going to add anything on the, what the residential buildings look like, given that's a key part of what we talked about today? Would it be helpful just to get a little bit of context of what they look like and what the materials are and?
Other than the elevations we have in the plan, that was submitted, they weren't included as part of this presentation, but we'll have to supplement that and maybe we can articulate a little bit about the-
Follow line very much with what-
Again, I'm not, I think part of the problem is we were reacting to that one picture and I think you almost need to go the other way by taking, showing us the elements of what it's going to look like and then you paste it back, because I'm not, I'm not completely sure how really it's going to play together, whether that's an accurate representation of, of it or whether it's less severe than that because of the distance backwards. So, okay, any, before we go to public comments, any more questions from the board? Pete? Laura?
I have one question about the traffic light. Is that a given? If you, so how does the process work? Do we wait to find out if the state approves for a traffic light before we make our final decision? I mean, this needs a traffic light.
I defer to your point, absolutely. I defer to your planner. So what we're presenting to you in the traffic study and that your peer reviewer has looked at is the warrants analysis for the traffic signal. What we're saying to you is that with the plan as presented to you, it absolutely needs a traffic signal and the warrants are met. That section of roadway, so we're proposing it, our analysis supports the fact that it's there, your consultant has reviewed it and said, they concur with that as well. It's a state highway, it's under Mass D O T jurisdiction, so ultimately, there are other ones who are going to have final say on it, but the way you would write a condition would be such that your, yeah, what you're expecting is, yeah, that that's going to be there. If, if it's not, we have to come back to you.
Absolutely. Decide whether this guy had a site for it.
We agree.
Yeah, don't need a traffic light. When you think about it, like when, well, let's see, I'm trying to think, when we built the Stop and Shop, we put a traffic light in, when, you know, we're, what's that?
Eaglewood Plaza.
Eaglewood, yeah, Eaglewood. I mean, we put a traffic light in there. So most warrants, like, commercial projects have traffic lights, but I think it's fair we just condition it as such and, yeah.
Yeah, but that's important as well. When we, when we go to the state is having that as a condition because that expresses the town's desire, the engineering supports it, the town supports it and so with that as a condition, we bring that to the state as well, saying, you know, we have to have this for a number of reasons and the engineering and the numbers justify it as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Dave?
No, at this point, I don't, I've got some questions on you.
I have a couple.
Okay, Laura.
Could I just finish?
Oh, no. Laura already had her turn.
A question of the tie-in of other properties to the sidewalks. How, I mean, when you, when you do things on your property, I can understand that, you know, you've got the control, but there's no way that you can really tie in to the Chinese restaurant next to you unless they, they were willing to modify all of their-
No, that's, I mean, from the state's standpoint, they're, they're trying to, to get built, what can get built within the, within the confines of the project approval, what's in the control of, of the applicant before, if you really-
You can only control what's on your property and, but you're right, if, if the next person does something, then you just connect it, it's a pretty simple process. I think it's the best way to, to deal with that circumstance and the fact that, I, I think the point that there's going to be a traffic light there, for pedestrians, almost more important for pedestrian purposes. Because, I mean, if you ever go on 114 by Merrimack and you watch those kids try to cross that street, they take their lives into their hands every day. It's really scary, so this is much better.
Well, I even think for Barker Street, they would be happy to have an interest of liking-
Well, that's what I mean. It gives everybody that lives over there a chance to get over there and not take their lives into their hands.
But not just getting having them.
Oh, just getting out, yeah, just getting out, yeah.
In terms of public transportation, have you discussed anything with the Merrimack Valley?
So they have the, the 14 bus route that is to the north of us. It doesn't come down into this area. One of the things, again, with that healthy transportation alternatives, the reason the bus stop and the signal are important as well is because the potential with them extending the service down to this area with a multi-family residential, there's an opportunity for that to happen. As we go through the process with the state, what we'll be looking at with the regional transit authority is, you know, I think the expectation is we probably would have the bus come into the site rather than stop on 125. I'm, I'm not expecting, because in, in some projects, what they'll do is they'll ask you to actually create the bus stop on 125 and create the little bump out. In this case, with the signal being in place, I'm more than likely what they'll do is they'll want an accommodation within the site so the bus could get off of 125, through that right in, right in driveway, proceed to the site, have a stop internal to the site and then come out with a signal so that they can make the turn or, and, you know, do the pickup that way. The issue really has to do with service times. Anytime you extend that route and the headways between buses gets too long, unless they can justify a significant amount of ridership, then, you know, they, they kind of hesitate in expanding the service, but with 192 residential units, there may be some opportunities.
Okay, thank you. Good.
Okay. You mentioned the crosswalk. I don't see any way after they get through, across the street, that there's no sidewalk.
To get, in terms of the site, yeah, that was one of the, in terms of linking into the development?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that has to happen.
Okay.
And your review consultant pointed that out as well. It's, we need the connectivity to have that happen.
Yeah, okay. How many cars are going to fit in the turning lanes, the left turn and the right turn lane?
I'd have to measure that for you. Typically, they'll be at least 100 feet long is typically what we design for, so that, you know, it's somewhere between four to five vehicles that'll get processed on each phase.
On the right, that's probably fine, but on the left, is five going to be enough?
It should be. The, the lanes are sized based on the attorney analysis that we've done, so they'll be long enough to store, it's basically one and a half times the requirement, and we have plenty of room to make the turn lanes longer. The design requirement is it has to hold at least one and a half times the maximum queue that's projected for the signal, so we will absolutely meet what that requirement is. Otherwise, D O T wouldn't approve it.
Parking at the clubhouse, five spaces. This is probably more of a residential partial question. You're going to have a lifeguard in the summertime, you're going to have at least one to two people, I'd assume, in a leasing office, you're going to only have, and you're going to need a handicap parking spot, I would assume, so you're probably going to have one parking space for the residents.
Yeah, as we, as we said, our, our target on our sites is always 1.75 and we're, we're not providing that, providing more than that. So we, we feel there's, there's ample parking within the site proper. The employees, leasing manager, the, the lifeguard and so forth would park internal to the site and other spots would be open for future residents of Princeton. And that just makes good business sense.
Okay. I was going to say, because you have them- Are you going to leave a sore tie in for the next property up?
There is an easement currently for that and certainly we, we have to respect whatever, whatever easement rights there are. It wouldn't, maybe, and it won't be in the same place, but we, we certainly understand that that was a provision of the prior plan.
And then on, get on the residential, one of the needs I know for the residential is, one, you talk about handicap accessibility to the buildings, all that stuff, the grade. Distance from the parking to the elevator then to the units is always a concern because somebody's double loaded corridors, you might have to walk 100 feet down the corridor to get to the elevator to backtrack 50 feet to opposite direction to your unit.
You'll have to just inside.
Is the main entrance centrally located to a building? It's on a one end or the other? See, then it makes the other.
Going back and going up and down.
Yeah, so they can go, okay. That's it for me right now.
This might be a question for my fellow board members, but I don't know if that rules my heart. The percentage of residential versus commercial, that's dictated by our bylaws or just their discretion? Is that?
Well, I mean, the mix between the two is what they've chosen. They, has to be compliant in terms of all the zoning, each of the pieces separately, but I, I mean, hypothetically, they could make the property all commercial if they wanted to. You know, there's, there's no requirement that they put residential on there.
So that's just sort of their discretion. Okay, and then the type of commercial that's in the commercial part, that's obviously has to be within use, but within that, it's just whatever you guys deem you can get in there.
There are, there are different requirements for parking for, for the different types of establishments, so, so parking for restaurants is a, is a higher ratio based on square footage. Office and, and retail are different, so we need to balance that mix. But yes, we don't, we don't have tenants signed up for those and, and there, there needs to be some flexibility within, within the decision. At the end of the day, we need to stay compliant with parking to the degree, this, this board waives it to a, to a point, but we can't put seven restaurants in there and, and overtax them. Some of that is, some of that is dictated or has to be dictated by the, by the building commissioner because even in the future, the tenant makes your change.
Yeah, you're going to have a little ebb and flow, that's, you know, but so I think it's a fair question that, you know, it, it, the obvious advantage you have is that you have two complementary uses, you, you've got some flexibility. You have, if, if, if it gets, somebody has a party or something, it makes the residential go up if it's off hours, you're, you're fine, so. Dave, you had one other question?
Yeah, you're very close to the end of the runway. Have you approached the airport authorities?
Definitely. We've had extensive discussions with both the manager at the airport- We've had extensive discussions with both the manager at the airport, as well as the, local FAA, which is actually out of Vermont, but...
Okay, so you have talked to the FAA?
We, we have, and we under, we understand the limitations, the, the height limitations, we're well within those. We, we will have to, to file some paperwork with them, but we don't feel we're at any, any kind of height that, similar to the prior hotel that was six stories that needed a beacon, we're not going to be up that high. We're also not directly over the, the approach runways as far as the, the configuration. The two, two, there's a north-south runway and there's an eastbound runway.
When they talk of donuts, what do you...
Let's, that's, that's, that's a red, don't, let's not even bring it up. It's caveat on their, on their side, let's, let's, let's carry on, yeah. I have one, before we flip it over to the public dis, I just, one last question. Could you very quickly talk about hours of operation, how you'll service the commercial, and where you put dumpsters?
Certainly. As, as far as hours of operation, I don't think anything, we, we haven't fully formulated the plan, but it's not anything that's out of the, out of the ordinary. We can, we can confer with, with Mr. Bowen and, and talk about some of the, the restaurant hours, which might be later, and, and understand what, what the norm is and get back to you on, on that with a, kind of a proposal for you to, to consider as a, as possibly a condition. With regard to the, the dumpsters, we, we have integrated some of, some of the dumpsters into, into the commercial site plan. You'll note that there's one to the rear of building, two that's kind of tucked in and out of the way. There is also a, a large dumpster area in the far northeast corner that's tucked into that seven-foot retaining wall to try to screen that and keep it away from, from that area. As far as the, the residential, what we're going to implement there is a single compactor in a, and that's, that's on the, on the site plan up on the north side. And the, the idea there is the residents actually drive to the compactor with their, with their trash and, and take care of it that way rather than have dumpsters throughout the site. It's, we find it a better way to manage trash and to be able to, to keep the site, keep those refuse areas clean. There'll also be provisions for recycling in that, in that area for, for those purposes. And it, it seems to work well. We, we will have some provisions for handicap accessibility to the, to that. Will probably be a ramp to access that, that dumpster drop-off for, for the handicap resident.
Good, okay, great, thank you. Now, if anybody, anybody else who's been patiently waiting wants to answer a question, I know we've gone a long time, but there's been actually a lot of information on the table. Please come up to the front and sit down and identify yourself for the record, and we'll see if we can get answers to questions.
Mr. Chairman, I know that we've gone pretty long on the presentation, so if you'd like for us to just take notes in terms of the questions, I mean, respond to them after the fact that...
Well, let's see. Let's, let's see what kinds of questions we get, so.
My name is Brian Sibley. I'm a prospective member of the North Andover community. We'll get into that later in the meeting. My question is about the business viability of the site. What percentage of occupancy do you have to have both on the retail and the residential side to maintain the viability of the property as a business entity? Meaning it's able to be maintained, able to be upkept properly and not become a nice one? Thank you.
So a little bit out of scope, really, but I think to the extent that, you know, your rational business, I mean, it's a fair thing is what prevents the property from deteriorating if it's built, I guess, if you want to somehow address that, you know?
Sure. I'm Jeff Brown, Property Properties. I can only take the stab at it. Without developing an operating budget, I, I couldn't tell you what makes it viable or not. I can tell you, we have over 5,000 apartments throughout New England. I think about 3,000 here in Massachusetts, and our average occupancy rate is about 93, so that's what we're achieving, whether it's Worcester, North Shore, Westford. So I, I think that's what we're seeing as sustainability, and certainly in this market, it's been a stable number, so I don't think we've looked at, at what point it wouldn't be. You have, you'll have conditions within your financing as to levels of financing versus occupancy levels as well, so.
Okay, okay. Fair enough, thank you. Any, any other questions?
Hi, Kathleen Caldwell, 253 Hickory Hill Road. I think the most important thing for me was to see a traffic light at the Barker Street intersection. That was number one for me, and I know that wasn't a sure thing, given the numbers and the state warrant, so for me, that was number one. I'm sure there'll be some other comments as it flushes out. I'd like to see what the residential looks like and everything, but I'm happy to see that and the pedestrian connections, because there's a lot of people and kids in the French Farm Hickory Hill side, and they, they'll all use this new residential and commercial, this commercial site, and there's a lot of good energy, and that's important. So that's at this point when I have to say, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Um, how, does it make sense? I, I do think it makes sense to do a site visit. I'm not quite sure we're quite ready yet. I mean, what do people think? Or would you like to have one more hearing and then do it, or do you want to do it now?
Well, I'd like to perform it for me.
You would like to do it now?
No, one more.
One more, because I think we'll see better what the, the residential, yeah, okay.
It's just me.
Yeah, okay.
It would be helpful, you know, that beautiful presentation, we're, we're zooming in, the, the thing you guys had running. If you could have the buildings in the back to be the height that they will be, so we could just see what they look like.
Those are actually in there as, as massings. The, the detail's not on them, similar to the, to the front buildings, but, but the massing and the elevations are in there representative of both the, the height and the, and the roof, if you, and so it, it does, it does present better from the standpoint of, of that perspective that you're, you're at, at the eye level. And then when you come up to the end of the, the presentation, you do start to rise up as if you're on Oz Good, and you, you start to, to see the roof line of the residential in the back. So what we can do is, we can, we can certainly, it's a, it's a model, it's a three-dimensional model. We can, we can change some of the perspectives and, and walk, walk through the same different places.
Yeah, I mean, I think you need, just part of the general process, do a little bit more work there. I think, to Pete's point, I think if we have one more discussion, we'll see it, and then we'll have a clear-cut idea of what we want to see, because I don't want you to have to do a balloon test, and we don't need to do that. What we would probably want to do is to stake out, you know, maybe where the circle is going to be and where some of the building corners are, just so we can have a feel for it, and then, you know, we'd probably do it on a Saturday morning and up on its conjunction site.
Yep, we can, we can have that done, whatever the board needs for, for staking and so forth.
Great, okay.
And just one question on this end. Now, standing the matter of elevations, I mean, does the board feel that generally in terms of the commercial design, is that something that the board feels comfortable with? I mean, we're still going to have to sort of enhance it and provide more details, but we just want to make sure we're on the, on the...
I know. What's your opinion on the commercial part?
I thought the plaza areas were really, first off, I thought your presentations were really well done, and thank you for investing the time. It's helpful. Plaza areas, I thought were terrific, and, you know, the idea of the, the retail area looks, you know...
Looks like Mashpee. Have you ever been to Mashpee?
Mashpee Connaught.
Yeah, it's great.
Personally, I think building two is a little low, and I think that's why the perspective... No.
Well, Regina's the architectural consultant, so she's a coaching person. All of our questions, we're going to refer to her about...
I think I've built a lot more buildings.
Well, that's what she signed up for.
At least you didn't put fake buildings on that.
So, yeah, so I, I think it's pretty nice. I think we all, we all like that, so. Thank you. I agree with Pete's comments. I thought you were, everyone was very well prepared. It flowed well together. I know we took a long time, but I think it's worth it because we'll get done faster, so, yeah, appreciate it.
Great, thanks. And so the next hearing is, it's continued to August 16th?
Yes.
Yeah, set? Okay. 7:00 PM?
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that's one way to get the soul on, is just to make every property connect to the next property.
Yeah.
I mean, eventually, they'll get there.
Well, that's it. You have to, you have to develop something along the way, yeah, so. Okay, moving right along. 70 of Gunkwit Lane, Lot 1. I hope people aren't here waiting on these items.
They were.
Well, I hope you enjoyed the presentations. We had to do this because we had the most people for this, so there's, there's no other way around it, so.
Okay.
Okay, what do we got?
So 70 of Gunkwit Lane, I have prepared a folder for you, and I just want to kind of walk through this material briefly so everybody gets perspective. Gunkwit Lane is actually Phase 2 of Rocky Brook Estates, so it was actually permitted back in 1998, and yet the lots on Gunkwit Road, at least two of which have...
Rocky Brook, that's Peter?
Peter Breen, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Back in 98, so they, he kind of sat in lots for a considerable amount of time. Recently, there's been two constructed on Lot 1 and, I believe, two for Stafford. So for those who don't know where Gunkwit Lane is, you have to go at the furthest point away from where we are now before you get to Boxford. So on Salem Street, if you were to turn left on Foster, Foster tees into Winter and Foster to the right. It continues on Foster to get to Tanglewood, I believe. You take a right on Tanglewood, I'm sorry, left on Tanglewood, right on Rocky Brook, and off of that. So it is highlighted...
It's like about Last Pound Lane over there?
Last Pound, you, you come to a stop sign, and if you weren't right, it was Last Pound. You go straight past that, left onto Tanglewood. So given the consideration of the planning board at the time, there were two very long cul-de-sacs, Rocky Brook and off of that, Gunkwit. In consideration for the approval, it seems that a condition was in place to actually have a utility and access easement run across Lot 1. So if you go to this, Rebecca says the highlight plan. So everybody's comfortable on Gunkwit Lane?
Yeah, I mean, I vaguely remember this from...
Okay, so it's a very long lot that is on the, it borders...
So what are we being asked to do here?
There's a condition for the CO for Lot 1 is conditioned on this construction of this access easement, and the easement itself has not been constructed. So this is the middle of Lot 1, and it, the dashed line is actually Boxford's property line, the town line of Boxford, and the easement is intended to go across the lot 7A on this plan to Bennett Road in the town of Boxford. The condition in the decision, which is next in your packet, was to actually construct this, although it's a 50-foot easement, 18 feet of which was to be constructed with the trees that were existing at the time, to be wood chipped and laid on this easement so that a fire truck or ambulance could traverse across this with no change in elevation. So it was literally chip up the wood chips and drop them. At the time, Peter Breen owned both of these lots, from what I could tell. Peter Breen has since sold Lot 1, which is the lot in North Andover, and the lot that's conditioned in the decision to have this easement constructed. And he's also, my understanding, sold 7A to a private homeowner now. The, for the most part, Lot 1 has actually been cleared almost to that property line. There's a very few trees left. However, the other side of this easement has not in any way been constructed. It is all still very wooded. So the decision is in your folder. A condition was that the note had to actually be added to the plan saying that this easement will be constructed 18 feet wide, wood chipped, and...
Well, you know, it, it seems to me it's not compliant.
It is not compliant.
So why are we here?
Because since the lot was sold to a owner, she has hired a developer to actually construct the house. They're at the point where they have prospective fires. I have indicated to them, I do not have authority to issue a CO.
They, they know what the condition is. I'm not at all...
No. No, it's just...
Ready to waive this. We, we did this for a reason, so then, for safety, because it was a one cul-de-sac and provide access, and if the condition clearly stated that, why aren't they going to comply with it? Because they don't feel like it? Because it's hard?
If, if, if I may, it's, it's not... Good evening. My name is Trini Losco, and I actually represent the current owner of the property, which was not the developer. My client bought the property in good faith and reliance on the public record. There was a Form J on this lot that was allowed by this board, saying that this lot was compliant in all respects. My client relied on that, did everything they were supposed to do in applying for a building permit, and actually got signed off by everyone in the town until it got to the planning director, and the planning director noticed his contingency, and then said, oh, by the way, the access easement wasn't granted. Okay, it was granted. It was granted on the lot that this board has jurisdiction over, which is the lot in North Andover. Now, I didn't represent Peter Breen, I don't know Peter Breen, but I did run title and present it to both the planning director and, and the town council. But the lot that lies in North Andover has no easement on it. And I, and I am told from Breen's counsel that North Andover did not want this easement coming into their town. So now the person that's, the person, that's why I'm, that's why I'm here before you, is because I brought it up with the planning director, the planning director sent it to town council, town council said it has to go back to the board.
Okay.
Okay, and, and did I say anything that was incorrect?
Well, there is a utility and access easement reported from Peter to the town of North Andover for this emergency address, so that's in your package.
On my client's lot.
On your client's lot.
Absolutely. And my client has cleared their lot for that access easement, but it's an access easement to nowhere.
It's an access easement across Lot 7A.
Well, let's, I feel uncomfortable unless taking a little bit deeper look, because this was 20 years ago, and we, we did this for a reason, and if there's a problem on the other side about doing it, I'd like to go back into the record a little bit more, at least from my, I don't know if anybody else has an opinion about this, but I feel that if we can get through access to this other property, it's a big deal. It's, it's actually something that we'd strongly prefer from a public policy point of view. I think that was the original intent, but, you know, it's been so long, I don't remember.
We have it in the package here.
Is, is the North Andover side prepared? It's got the chips down?
No. No. Completely wooded with, with a barrier.
What about the Box, uh, Boxford side?
I'm, I'm sorry, where?
The Boxford side, there.
The, the, that's on the... Talking about the Boxford side. The, the North Andover side is compliant. It is cleared and easement is drafted, okay, and recorded and granted as it should be.
It's, it's almost compliant. There's still a few trees to come down, and there's landscape rocks across the easement that's...
Thank you, there are six trees left just on, on the property line, which would be removed, but again, it's an easement to nowhere.
Have you looked at what the lot says that's on the Boxford side?
Yeah, there's nothing.
There's no easement?
There's no easement.
No, there is a easement, the Lot 17 on the Boxford side from Peter Breen to the town of North Andover. You, you provided...
No, no, that wasn't the question. Excuse me. I think the question you just...
The part that hasn't been, still got the jungle.
The, the, the lot in, the lot in Boxford is registered land, it does not have an easement on it. That's what I was saying. The lot in Boxford. The lot, absolutely, the lot in North Andover has the easement on it. The lot in Boxford does not have an easement on it. It is owned by the, by Marcus and Yan Cheng Ruler, and there, I have, it's registered land and recorded land. There is no easement on that property. When Peter Breen sold it, he did not make it subject to an easement. Now...
So, so there's a utility and access easement 50 feet wide over Lot 17, running from Gunkwit to Bennett on planned subdivision planned land in Boxford by Thomas Levy Associates dated April 26, 93, Land Court Plan Number 34498F. And it grants, and it's from, I'm sorry, permanent right of easement in and on area situated partly in North Andover, partly in Boxford. So unless this is...
But it was not granted in the chain of title on Boxford. There is no easement on the lot in Boxford. It does not exist. That was a representation that was made to town council. That was the deed that I forwarded you.
Well, can I get town council in North Andover, Boxford? We're talking town council in North Andover, Boxford.
I'm sorry?
We're talking at North Andover.
I've had no-
Well, I, I think we still need to do a little bit of work on this. I don't see how we can finish this tonight. I don't know how other people feel, but I'm terribly confused.
If I may, can I do that?
Now, we haven't done any research on the DDoD.
See, we're, and, and I apologize, because I wasn't there 20 years ago. I have no idea, as I said to you, I represented a builder in good faith that relied on the record, and there was an easement, the access easement was there, he did clear but for six trees, and was more than willing to do that.
I'm not an attorney, but all I know is that we probably wouldn't want an easement that can't go anywhere. And I don't know how you modify a, an error like that in the Land Court within Massachusetts, but it would, that would appear to be a question.
Well, let's, let's not get into the-
No, but that's what he has to, that's what he has to-
Yeah, we just, if-
The problem-
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So I, I was just looking at the letter from the fire department, this Jean. And they're saying that if it's installed residential sprinkler system, I think they're saying that that's preferable to them than using this easement in an emergency.
So they do have residential sprinklers that was required as part of the decision? Included in your packet was the fire chief at the time, back in 98, who deemed that to be more important than this access easement. It was up to the planning board, he, he didn't care one way or the other if it was included. And so-
It was Bill, right?
I think it was Bill Dolan at the time?
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't know if the current-
So I reached out to the current one, and they submitted a letter, pretty much to the same effect, that they're saying they can at least-
Well, let's, I still want to go back and look at this a little bit more, because I, I guess, uh, from a public policy point of view, I'd rather see more street connections and super long cul-de-sacs. I think it's a better-
Yeah. That, that seems to be in all the notes, the reason for conditioning this. And it was emergency.
I'd like the members of the board to, to know, again, there's an innocent homeowner with a family that was supposed to close on a house and move in, and they're here tonight. They are willing to do anything. I was willing to do anything to appease the town. I cannot get, and even if the town was to say to us, we're not going to grant the certificate, the certificate of occupancy, after issuing a Form J saying that this lot was in compliance with all subdivision covenants in 2014, and then you're asking me and refusing to issue a permit because we don't have control over a lot in another town that was sold that doesn't have an easement on it? I think it's a bit unreasonable, but you're the board, so I'll do what you so require.
Well, you're putting us a little bit on the spot here. I mean, you, you make it sound like we're parties, everything is happening, 20 years we haven't been.
I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Yeah, well, you had, so-
This has been, this has been ongoing with the town now.
Well, this is the first time you've come here.
For two months, sir, with a family that wanted to close on a house, with a building permit that was signed off by every town board, including the fire department, with a homeowner ready, with a kid going to college, and their whole life has been up in, and that's why they're here. And it's unfortunate that now you're saying, well, we gotta go back and look at it. Well, why wasn't it looked at in 2014, when the Form J was filed and said, this lot conforms with all of our subdivision covenants and all of our requirements?
The Form J, we leased it from restrictions as to sale and building specified thereon.
It's all the covenants. I, I disagree, I, I-
Yeah, I don't think we're, I, I, I think we, we gotta move on. We're not gonna, we're not gonna vote on it tonight unless members of the board want to vote on it tonight.
Then I would respectfully request that you go on the record that you are denying the issue of the permit tonight.
No, we're not. We're deferring it.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Okay, we might finance, and it's going to run out, and we have to leave the house.
I don't know if you-
You need to take the common sense approach. You can't put a road in there anyways.
Can you, if you're gonna come up, we're not gonna get into an argument here, but if you want to come up, I want you to talk.
No disrespect, I don't mean to be-
I didn't develop the land.
Okay, wait, wait, wait.
Your name is?
Philip A.
But I built the house.
And these people are trying to move in. This easement, which was said to be done back in 1993, cannot be done. If you went to the site right now and looked at Bennett Road, the elevation is 10 feet higher. Right away, it drops off. There's actually a guardrail there. You couldn't, unless you brought Phil in, put an easement in there. Right? Am I right or wrong?
Uh, there was a elevation change.
Yeah.
Well, nonetheless, look, this is the first that our board has seen this. I, you, you put us in a spot. I'm empathetic to the, the point of the applicant, and maybe what we could do-
The other thing is that part of the land that needs to conform to, to make the easement is in Boxford.
It may very well, it is in Boxford, we know it's in Boxford, but what we're dealing with is, this is the first chance this board has had to look at this sort of thing.
John, what is this man supposed to do?
Well, what are we supposed to do? I mean, you know, I'm not-
All you have to do is take the common sense approach. You can't put the easement in, even if you wanted to, you couldn't.
So, John, just in terms of-
Just defer it.
Just in terms of the timeline here, we've had one meeting to consider this, and, you know, you built the house.
I didn't think it had to go to a meeting.
Well, but you have had years.
No, I haven't, I'm not-
You had, the whole time you built the house, so what you're trying to do is you're trying to pin it on us.
No, I would more, if I would have pinned it on anybody, it would be Peter Breen.
I'm just saying that-
Because he's the developer of the, of the developer.
You're gonna talk about, you know, why aren't we acting? This board has had this issue for the least amount of time of anyone in this room.
I understand that.
Everyone else has had this issue for years. So is it unreasonable for us to say, we're not going to take years, we're saying, for purposes of why this was done, to consider it for a meeting?
I think-
And I'm even willing to have Jean, to have the board authorize Jean to pass this thing through if we get it properly sorted out, but the problem is-
If I, if I were to venture a guess, I'd say the reason it wasn't done was not because of North Andover, but because of Boxford.
Boxford provided us an A and R plan for that lot that shows the easement, moved out of the-
Did they say why they didn't do it? Or why didn't they make 7A do it? I think it's Boxford.
Well, that's why, well, I, I, I don't want to get into any more speculation, what I'd like to do is, everybody okay with having Jean hold this, and if we get everything sorted out, you've got to let us know?
Well, what more is it to sort out, though? On this?
I don't even know what all the facts are. I don't know whether this could be done or not. I, I don't know whether this could be done or not. It feels like there's conflicting facts here. I think you've got to sort through it. If it's, if it is feasible to get this easement and all the pieces are aligned to it, I think we should do it. If it's not, then you should send us a note explaining exactly why and what the mitigation is.
Is there a conservation issue too? Because it's a-
I would ask that you provide whatever documentation you have on that Boxford lot that says that it has no easement and it can't be constructed. It's, it's, it's-
Not an issue.
Then it's up to town council. I wanted assurance that I'm not authorized to give that CO. He fully agreed, I'm not authorized. He recommended it comes back here, but town council and-
That covers you.
Russell has had conversations. So we need to extend those conversations. I don't, it, somebody has to prove that it can't be constructed on the Boxford side.
I have no issue doing that for you.
I agree there's a significant elevation change, but it's, it's independent of this. If, if, if it physically cannot be created, that's one thing. The fire department has weighed in, they could bring hoses on foot from Bennett Road if they needed to. But all that was said at the time of the subdivision, and the board at that time deemed it necessary. So we can continue with-
So just continue to get the rest of the information, send us a note, and we'll make the final call.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a, is there a list of other information?
I brought that up briefly.
All right. Well, you're asking for other information, I'm just wondering if it's clear to attorney Goldberg what that other information is.
I think Jean was very clear, she wanted proof of the allegation, and I made it, just no easement on the lot in Boxford, and I should be able to have it tomorrow.
Okay. And you have, we have, right now is a condition of conflicting facts, right? You say there is an easement in Boxford, you said it isn't. But John, I'll go back to something you said earlier in the meeting, when you were talking about sidewalks. You said, you can only control what you're authorized to control, and we can't control what somebody in Boxford does.
If that turns out to be the case, and it's not within your control, you don't have control of land and it can't be done, then we can take care of it pretty quickly. I just don't know that.
Conditions to satisfy that are these documents from Boxford saying there's no easement?
It's the registered deed of the lot.
Well, I mean, I don't even know who owns that property, and if it never had an easement associated with it, and it's privately owned at this point, I, I don't see how you can put an easement on it at this point.
I just have the easement that you provided, Peter Breen to the town of North Andover over Lot 17, which, at, at, one of these plans says that was Lot 17 at one time. So the town of North Andover, what appears to be, does have easement rights across that lot. If you're saying something different, then-
I will, I-
But Lot 17 no longer exists, right? It's now Lot 1 and something else.
Lot 17 no longer exists on the current line of court, but that's correct.
So, John, I just want to say, I think from a matter of public policy, and I agree with what you're saying, this is very long. With respect to fire response, the fire department has weighed in about residential sprinklers, but that's not the only type of emergency response, not fire.
Right, there could be other-
There could be other types of emergency responses for which that very long cul-de-sac poses a problem. And so I'm, I'm not unsettling the path we're on here, I just think that, given the time we've had to look at this, I agree with what you're saying, that as a matter of public policy, we have to understand the facts here. So that down the road, if there were an emergency, someone says, why did they not have emergency access, we can answer that question, to the satisfaction of homeowners.
Right.
So I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Is there a, does anyone know where the, the path that goes out straight through the circle that cuts through to another road goes to? I forget the name.
He doesn't know, or I haven't showed him.
Bennett Road. Is that what you mean, where it ends up on Bennett Road?
Well, you know, the, Gunkwit has a cul-de-sac at the end, and there's, there's a path through there, a road through there.
It's in everybody's steed, so that it's where you can come.
And where does that go to?
Boxford Street.
Boxford Street. So there's already, all right, so there's, there's not just one way in, there's actually two ways in and out.
There's another public light that is in everybody's steed, it was in the subdivision decision, whether it's 18 feet wide and whether a fire truck can get through it, I have no idea, but it actually runs Boxford Street up, going through Peter Breen's lead, and comes out at the end of Gunkwit.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll hand it to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more.
Yep. 351 Willow Street South. John Warren is actually the engineer here, if you could bring up the Lucas for Willow Street. In February of 2015, Bacon Joy was an applicant for a Site Plan Review Special Permit to add an approximately 11,000 square foot addition to the building, and to add a parking area. They were also granted a Parking Reduction Special Permit. Since 2015, they actually have not constructed that building, the addition or the parking area. They have purchased an adjacent building, and they are now moving some of their operation into the adjacent building. So they have three uses, manufacturing, warehousing, and office, and the distribution of space for those three uses is changing. So John Warren is here to actually request an insubstantial, insubstantial change associated with that. They still want to build the addition and the parking area, however, some of the-
Are they going to run out of time under special permit? Or how much more time do they have?
They have two years, so they have till February of next year. And they, they want to get going, but it, there's some, again, you're here to evaluate whether there are minor changes to the plan, but they're, John's going to sequence them as they go along. And John, you have that revised? Yes. Okay, in your packet was the, a table of off-street loading bay requirements, there's been one minor change to that. It had said that there were six, five required, there's actually six required for the bylaw, but they have actually seven existing.
I'm not sharing with her.
I can get next door.
Oh, I'm good.
She can read off mine.
Yeah. My glasses on.
Good evening, for the record, my name is John Warren, I work for the Warren Cameron Group. We're here tonight representing Muffin Realty Trust for their property located at 351 Willow Street. As Jean had mentioned, the planning board issued a Site Plan Review Special Permit and a Reduction in Parking Special Permit back in February of 2015 for this property, for the construction of an addition out back. What I did is I brought the original site plan, in the middle, we just submitted a section showing the revisions, but I've got the whole site plan, and Willow Street South is on the upper right-hand corner of the page. You drive in, the proposed addition was out back. That was permitted, as part of that, we actually permitted an additional parking area, stormwater management, we had to go through conservation. Right after they received their special permit and their order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, they had a chance to buy 160 flagship. All of a sudden that came up. 160 flagship is actually right around the corner, actually, this way. So they moved forward, bought 160 flagship. Pretty much 160 flagships used for dry storage for raw materials, which is pretty much what the addition was going to be used for. So now they started looking at, well, do we need the addition? And then they said, well, we're still going to build the parking. And then they've gone back and forth for a year, and then they, they're actually doing very well, and they said, you know what, we do need the addition, so we still want to build the addition. So they started relooking, reevaluating the uses in the building, and they kind of started changing the building uses, and that's what we're here tonight for, is modifications in the building use within the building, and some modifications to the actual site plan. So what I'll do is I'll go through the modifications of the site plan, they're pretty minor. Originally, we had a dumpster enclosure, there was a notch kind of cut out of the addition, and that was to make room for a dumpster enclosure. Now, based on the use that they've got in here, they decided, you know what, let's close off the addition and just square it off. Again, an additional 700 square feet. By doing so, they actually have to move the dumpster enclosure over to where they were proposing, where they used to have a ramp, the original design that got approved, we were proposing to remove that ramp and build a new loading bay there. Well, we'll get rid of the loading bay and put the dumpsters and the dumpster enclosure right off the backside of the building between the existing loading bays. There was an existing stairway and landing right here, they got to replace it with a ramp instead. Because of the way the uses are inside the building, the ramp works fine. Previously, the way the uses were inside the building, the ramp wouldn't have made sense there, so that's why it wasn't there. Out back, we're actually getting rid of the ramp, where we had the ramp, and replacing it with just a landing and stairs, and then we're going to have a walkway that'll come down to the paved fire access that actually currently exists around the existing building. This is existing building here. By doing this, we're actually removing about 670 square feet of impervious area that was previously proved, and it'll be replaced with landscape. So the proposed change is outside, all the modifications over in these locations were already previously impervious, so there's no changing, changes in the impervious coverage, so there's no changes required in the drainage design. In actuality, we're decreasing the amount of impervious surface because of the pavement In actuality, we're decreasing the amount of impervious surface because of the pavement that we're removing off the backside. However, we're not proposing any changes in the stormwater management design, leaving everything the way it was. So within the building, we're changing the uses to accommodate difference in uses within the building. As Jean had pointed out, you've got office, warehouse, and manufacturing. So there's actually an additional 700 square feet in the calculations to account for this additional proposed extension of the addition. So we're actually reducing the amount of office space because of the fact that they don't need it now because they moved some of the warehousing in offices over to 160 Flagship. So that's kind of the biggest thing that reduced the parking spaces was the reduction in office spaces. They're actually decreasing the amount of warehouse because, again, they're using 160 Flagship and then they're increasing the amount of manufacturing. And when you look at all the numbers, the required parking spaces originally was 214, now it's 206. At the time, we had requested a 35% reduction in the parking that we received from the planning board and that took the spaces from 214 down to 140. Now we go from 206 down to 134. So currently, based with the 35% reduction, we need 134 spaces. The original approved design, we proposed a total of 142 spaces. We're not proposing to change that at all. So we're still proposing 142 spaces. So we're over the amount of spaces that's what's required. The amount of employees isn't changing. The plan that was approved, we had 140 proposed employees. We're still at that 140 number based on these changes. So then, looking at the loading bay requirements, by reducing the office number, it actually reduces the required loading bays from two to one. The manufacturing or the warehouse actually stays the same and the manufacturing originally, I think I had, originally I had the manufacturing, when I submitted the letter, I originally had the manufacturing was two. It actually is three. So that's why I submitted the revised plan tonight. So when you tally up all those numbers, you're required to have six bays and we're proposed to have seven. So we have one extra bay from what's required. As you can see, the changes on the outside of the building are pretty minor and that's the reason why we're here tonight requesting an insignificant change to the project. Some of this work is within the 100-foot buffer zone, so we are going before the Conservation Commission tomorrow night for these, some of these outside modifications. I don't see any issues with the Conservation Commission because, again, their 100-foot buffer is roughly right in here. We're actually reducing the amount of impervious surface in the buffer zone from what was previously That's pretty much what I got. I'd like to open it up to questions from the board.
Start. Jean, you want to go first?
I don't have any questions.
Can you put up the Lucas for Rebecca, please? I just want to see which property.
I don't think they captured 160.
Okay, so it's not the one next door?
I don't think I captured it.
No, it's not directly next door.
So that.
Actually, I think it's this one.
Okay.
Yeah.
I believe that's it.
Okay, so, but it's still a reasonable distance if they, if you have a parking issue. You can share the parking, so, okay.
And the board has, in the original decision, they have an evaluation required for the parking.
That's right.
That was still being there, obviously.
And then the second question was on the roof. How is that being drained? Because you are increasing the roof size.
The roof area?
Yeah.
That runs through into the existing drainage pond over here.
Okay, so that'll all still be captured.
Correct.
Okay.
And actually, as part of the original design, we introduced an additional stormwater measure to treat that runoff before it discharges into that, that ponding area, that existing ponding area.
And you, now you're going to add those calculations to that size, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it's not a lot.
700 square feet is pretty negligible with the grand scheme of things.
Still, but 4%, yeah, so, but, okay.
No problems.
All right. Pete. So is everybody okay with, we have to declare this, what is it?
Insubstantial change that I can document.
Okay. So you're right. And so, does somebody want to make a motion to that?
We consider this an insubstantial change to whatever the existing.
The only thing I would ask is, do you want the changes reflected in as filter? Do you want this recorded as part of a decision? So it can be conditioned to be recorded to go with the land as well. Yeah, that's what I would recommend.
Okay. Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
I have a question.
Okay, excellent. Yes.
Jean, how are we doing on the next mailer for Wood Shore Residence?
I have done nothing with the next mailer. Other than receive your email today.
Ignore it.